Good evening, Ashburn City Council. April 3rd, there's your agenda, it's pretty much the same thing it was in the newspaper. We are told that Andrea Pierce will not be here tonight, she'll be on the meeting by phone. And there you go, we'll be starting momentarily.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for being with us tonight for our regularly scheduled council meeting, Thursday, April the 3rd. May we have a roll call, Ms. Hill? I'm sorry. At this time, I call this meeting to order, and I'm going to ask Mr. Perry to lead us in prayer, and to be followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Stand with me as we pray. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us. Lord, and we thank you for all the blessings that you've given each one of us in our lives. Lord, may we always recognize the effect that you have in us. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful city that you've given us to serve in, to live in. Lord, may we be good stewards of the resources that you give us, or may we be active citizens, and may we care for those that are around us. Lord, help us to be a unified community that cares about each other, Lord, and that loves each other. Lord, we can thank you for all the many blessings, in Jesus' name, amen. Just stay standing and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Now, roll call.
Customer John Perry.
Yes, ma'am.
Customer Sheldon Smith.
Present.
Customer Corey Jordan.
Present.
Customer John Burgess.
Present.
Customer Andrea Pierce, back on. Mayor Sandra Lumpkin.
At this time, I'm going to ask for an approval of the agenda of our last meeting. You all should have gotten copies of the minutes and had time to read them over. May I have a motion to approve?
Off the motion.
I have a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Also, at this time, I will ask you to bear with me to make an amendment to the agenda. We didn't put the participation of Georgia Cities Week on the agenda. We take part in this every year, this year is from April the 20th through April the 26th. I have a resolution stating that the City of Ashburn recognizes Georgia Cities Week and encourages all residents to support the celebration and the corresponding activities. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I have a motion to adopt the resolution, making amendments to the agenda stating that the City of Ashburn participates in Georgia Cities United Week.
Second.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what she said. I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
I have a motion, and I have both commissioners present, they'd like to speak.
Yes, sir, okay, we'll do that. I do have to ask for your indulgence in amending the agenda. May I have a motion to do that?
I make a motion.
I have a motion.
To amend by the City, County Commissioner to speak.
Yes, sir, I will. Oh, I have a motion. May I have a second?
Second, sir.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. We have a couple of special guests with us tonight, County Commissioner. James Burgess?
Yes.
Dana Witt, would you all like to make a comment, we're happy to have you with us.
Sure.
A little big brief, first off, thank you Honorable Mayor Lumpkin and council members. I'm going to quickly speak to you all, just as a reminder, that we have, we're getting ready to start planning for our comprehensive plan, at this time, get that renewed for February of next year. I believe you all have had your check-in for the past plan. We just had our check-in for the Turner County piece this week. We're looking forward to working with you all as we come together and to put the whole comprehensive plan together, and I just wanted to reach out to you, give you guys a heads-up, there has been no date set for the kickoff for the official comprehensive plan yet, but we look forward to collaborating with you all and getting that plan updated. That's all I have for you today.
Thank you.
Emma Colley would also like to speak to you all about another plan that is on the right hand. Thank you.
Good evening. So, we are also working on our service delivery strategy, it's due to be updated. I asked Latrice to send copies to all the cities so that you could begin the process of reviewing them. It is due also in February of next year, so I'm in the lead for it. The plan is to begin looking at the documents and meeting as a group in May, so if you could take a look at that document, identify who your point of contact is going to be for that document, and then I'll schedule a meeting with the cities, the Board of Education, the Chamber, so we can all sit down, go through the document, and begin the process of updating it as appropriate. So, hopefully, this will be a fairly simple process, and we won't see a lot of changes. But it's been 20 years since we've looked at it, so we definitely, there's been some changes within the city, within the county, so we want to make sure that everyone gets documented appropriately, those changes. So if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Can you go speak on the same thing you want from us, the whole?
Oh, yes, so in the service delivery strategy, it currently states that the City of Ashburn provides animal control, so we need to work through that, obviously, but currently, we have been put an MOU together to support the sheriff. He does do animal control in the unincorporated area, and he has a small kennel, and what we would like to do is turn overflow to the City of Ashburn to take care of those animals. What we're proposing initially is to provide $10,000 to help you finish that facility, and then we can start working with you to bring our overflow. Now initially, the talk was about possibly paying $50 per animal, but we need to negotiate whether that 10,000 will possibly give us a window of time without a fee as we're investing in that facility, and then at some point in the future, start paying per animal. But again, that's a discussion between the city and the county to see what will work for everybody, that's just an initial proposal, and we're happy to sit down and work through that, but we think that's a better solution for us, to use your facility, invest in that, and rather than build a separate facility at the Sheriff's Department. We think that makes better sense for both agencies.
I have a question.
Sure.
Have you known in the house before you get in camera?
So, we have had no discussions, done no investigation on this, so what we want to do is sit down with you and begin those discussions and see how that affects us and you, and see where that goes, and that's going to play into this document, because once we work through that, that change, if any, will be incorporated into the service delivery strategy. So again, it's very early in the discussions, we've had, we've just put some proposal together, we want to bring the city in and really work through the, that's a bolt of the issue. So it's very early, but thank you, Sheldon, for asking about that. Mr. Burgess, you have anything to add to that?
Nope, you have summarized it.
Well, just let us know when you all get ready, and we'll try to be available.
Yeah, just send a response to Latrice's email with who you want to be the lead on my particular one, so I can make sure that I reach out to them when I'm ready to meet in May, okay?
And just for general information, we are, our chief is currently, we're doing, have some plans to do some improvements at the dog pound, we're going to get some larger kennels, do you want to speak on that for just a bit, plans for the improvements?
Right now, we're currently working on kennels, the kennels built on the inside of it. Got that Trish is running already, we have AC unit, get a ventilator span put in, so hopefully, we should house about 13, 15 dollars at one time.
That's perfect, and that's kind of the overflow, now we looked at the sheriff's numbers, he can hold about five dogs, it's for that overflow, sometimes it's a few dogs, sometimes it's almost, you know, seven or eight dogs. So, we will want to work and use your facility and invest into a facility that's already here, rather than build a complete new one in the county. It just makes good sense to take advantage of what the city has. So, obviously, we want to invest in that and make that work for everyone. So, just work with Commissioner Burgess or myself on anything you have questions on. Do you need a lead on yours, James?
On the dog pound?
No, no, on the...
On the comprehensive plan?
Or are they going to give that to SGRC?
I think they have a list, but is there a better, is there a person in contact that is best in contact for the comprehensive plan?
So when we begin those discussions, if you have a lead for that as well, just get that to Mr. Burgess.
Yeah, we can start with the clerk, and you can connect us with the whole board, and we can decide from there at that point.
Thank you so much for the time, we appreciate you letting us speak this evening. Thank you.
Thank you all.
At this time, I'm going to ask for approval of the March 6th, 2025 City Council meeting minutes.
Off the motion.
I have a motion to approve, may I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor? All in favor, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Is Ms. Lawson in the audience?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. At this time, Ms. Malaysia? Lawson has asked to make a speaker's appearance, if you'd like to come forward.
I want to get some speed bumps on our road, and I'd be, go ahead and get up.
Is that on? Can you all hear me?
It's on. And I would get now a petition, may I get a motion now?
Okay.
Cars speeding, yeah.
Go with the city.
Cars speeding, kids playing. Oh, it's not on, cars speeding on the road, on, on, going around the curve, if they come down the road, they don't wait too fast, you do, you stop in time.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Lawson?
I'm just curious where you're going, if you know specifically where you're planning to be putting up whatever question you're just, I was looking at that, just curious.
I think maybe starting at the top of their road, coming around the curve, one in the middle, I don't know the address, but one in the middle.
Oh, on Highland Road or on Southwood?
Southwood Street.
Okay.
I'm thinking maybe three or four, the long ones or short ones, it doesn't matter.
Any comments from the council?
Now, I know for myself, I did it myself also, just to see. On the, on the speed bump now, like in Houndby? You speed up, and it, it don't even home, just smooth. When you slow down, it gets your car even worse, but faster you go, that way they're doing that in Houndby, you just see it.
Is it braking or something?
Huh? It's braking, go in Houndby, go real slow, pump speed up, and then speed across, when you speed up, you don't even feel it. And that would, the young folks on the market now, they just blow that across.
So, anything we can do?
I recommend, I recommend we get all these presidents over in the area, see what's going on.
And you go jump and put the speed bump, come tell them, you sit to the pound, they wipe the speed bump off, and go with yourself, speed over, you'll see, you get the smooth, and then you slow down, and it do.
We've had several requests for speed bumps in different parts of the city, and so far the council has not been in agreement to put them in place, but I think I can, we might can ask the chief to do, maybe do a little small study, have somebody checking on the traffic and the speed, and how many cars are going through there, and how fast they're going, and that sort of thing, if that would be okay with the council, to at least do a study.
Is that a heartbeat or speed bump, because I mean, bigger or...
You can't give them too big, like carburetors, carburetors.
Yeah, just a carburetor, see, and do that.
Give them if you want.
Anyway, yes.
My carburetor, it's off.
Thank you, Ms. Lawson.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is an appeal for the suspension of the alcohol beverage license of Top Shelf Liquor located at 341 Martin Luther King Jr. Drive. Someone here to speak on that?
Yes. Hello, how is everyone? That's great. I want to try to use you guys' technology, if that's okay? Good evening to the esteemed council, as well as the Honorable Mayor, and my name is Shay Edward Shipp, and I represent Barone De Say, who is the proprietor of Top Shelf Liquors in Ashburn, Georgia. Today, we come before you not in adversarial manner, we come before you to make sure that the council, as well as the Honorable Mayor, knows that Mr. Barone De Say is quite mindful of the severity of his actions. He understands that there was a violation of the ordinance. There was a control by, done by state authorities that did in fact find that he sold alcohol to someone who was underage. So, this hearing today, I hope that it doesn't surprise anyone when we come before you begging for mercy. Mr. De Say is a young individual himself, he's 21 years old, he is a young business owner, and he noticed that a lot of individuals were traveling out of town to go buy liquor or drink beers, whatever, what have you, and they were ending up being stopped on the way back into Turner County, whether it be for DUI, or whether it be for, whatever the reason may be why they were stopped. He saw that there was a need to bring it more so into the county, into the city, to kind of alleviate that unsafety of these people traveling out of town and having to travel back from Araby, from, forgive me, from Acry, all these areas that were selling alcohol at the time. He opened this business, and for the most part, he has done what. This incident, as I always say to all of my other clients, it doesn't necessarily mean that his representative, of him, his business operations, or who he is as a person, he is not the son of his worst debt. In fact, upon getting this citation, he did everything in his power, including purchasing new software for his CRM, his cash register, to be able to scan the person's license, and automatically make the determination whether or not that person is underage. Trying to operate you guys' TV so that I can actually show you the video of what's working out. Even if I have the places left out in front of each and every, I will do that as well, because I want to emphasize just how much he's invested in making sure that this never happens again. Additionally, to show good faith and to show that he is not just, you know, wanting to just pay the fine, and be done with it, and then go about business as usual. He has expressed to me, and I'm expressing to the council, as well as the esteemed mayor, that he is willing to donate to whatever nonprofit calls, including the local basketball team, any nonprofit call that has to do with children, to show that, hey, you know, I made a mistake, and I want to pour back into that community, and show them that I am not just a proprietor of hard liquor who just sells it without taking any time to see the market itself. Again, we've all made mistakes in life, and I know that that's not necessarily an excuse, he's not looking for excuses. All he is asking this council for is for them to allow him to reopen tomorrow. With this new software in place, he's been shut down for going on three weeks now, anyone who has run a business before knows that shutting that business down, especially in the economic climate we are in now, can be detrimental and quite devastating. So he is asking for the permission from the members of the council, as well as the mayor, that he be allowed to open tomorrow, go back to selling this alcohol and using this new software, which for whatever reason, I can't get it in work on this television, so I'll just pass my laptop to you all, and he be given this opportunity to show that he is remorseful for his actions, and that he does want to do the right thing he's been for. So, I ask again that you consider this, and I ask for permission to come up to the council and the mayor to show this to you. Is that okay?
Yes.
Again, I thank you all for your time.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have one question, does he still have a state license?
Yes, uh, mayor, he has said he has a state license.
And he's still in good standing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Does you have a question?
I'll definitely say this, I wasn't there the last week, but I was on the phone, and actually, it happened, it kind of wishy-washy to be, because the last time that internal revenue came in and they busted, no one had, no one had closed down for 30 days. Is it all right, Mr. Trotter?
I don't think we got caught either, I think so.
Yeah, they got caught, and it's the same thing as the video game, same thing, the store doing the same thing, internal revenue come in, they bust them, gambling the game, counting their seed, never shot nobody. These people making money, giving us money, and yet they did wrong, that's a state job, they're getting the food, yeah, and we did wrong, actually, because we did cause a vote on it. They supported us, not nothing that the council voted on, but I know one council is very friendly with the other liquor store, and that's the one that didn't get busted, and that's why they were so adamant about shutting down for 30 days, because that's their friend, and their friend gets to make more money. But if I was here, I would let them know that you do it, did it for some, and you didn't do it for others. And that's our audience, not nothing to vote on, we don't vote on our audience. If anything, could have told the chief, go take them tickets. If anything, could have told the chief, go take them tickets. But you let the voters vote.
I agree, we should not have had to vote on it, but the ordinances were not being enforced. And according to our ordinances, if you are, if you sell alcohol to a minor then your license should be suspended for thirty days. That is an ordinance that has been accepted by this council. And, um, and I was the one that brought it up. And I'm not sure what liquor store you think I'm friends with.
It ain't liquor store at all.
I don't, I'm not friends with any other liquor store, but, um...
I think that we just have, did it for the stores it sold, that, uh, we did and they didn't do it for other liquor stores I talked to.
Well, I believe it's a shame.
He told me the same thing.
I believe it's a problem that the city didn't enforce it the last time. I think that's more of a problem, why it was not enforced the last time and that we had to vote before enforcing it this time. I don't think it's a problem that we enforced it, I think it's a problem that we didn't enforce it. Because it is a city ordinance.
If I understand correctly, you are here to ask that the city council reinstate their license immediately?
Correct. Um, we could, well, not at this current minute, but we would ask that it be reinstated at twelve hundred and one AM tomorrow. Although we understand them, uh, have all the citizens.
But you know, we, we have set a precedent in, um... I was, I don't know how, how's it, legally, Mr. Dennis.
Gentlemen, sir, you said your, your client still has a state license. Was the state license revoked at any point?
No, the state license has not been revoked. At any point.
Is the charge pending or?
As far as we know, the city of Ashburn is the only, um, municipality or agency that brought a charge against him.
So the state didn't do anything?
The state's left it to the municipality to handle. And that's why we come to you tonight to ask for...
So the state expected the municipality to enforce their ordinance and their rules?
I wouldn't be able to speculate on what state would want it, but I would say that, again, that's why we're here tonight to ask for, uh, some relief.
I'm sorry, sir, how long has your client been closed?
It has been closed since March tenth. And it is, today is April third, so we're looking at roughly, uh, twenty-one days, twenty-eight days? Twenty-three days.
Maybe seven days ago.
What's that?
Seven days ago.
Seven days ago.
Mr. Trout, we got something you say.
So, yeah. We only cited the one, the clerk who sold to the underage drinkers. Uh, the state did, the state cited the business itself. I spoke with Shane and, uh, they are court on every other month. They should receive some of the mail of what I hear it, uh, for the month of May.
Thank you for that information, Mr. Trout.
I don't, I'm not sure what we can do legally. Uh, I guess we need, uh, advice from our attorney.
You can certainly, um... They have, in effect, uh, been suspended. The license has been suspended for twenty-something days already. You can determine in your discretion that that's a sufficient punishment. You can add to that, uh, it's certainly within your discretion. But they certainly have already served the suspension inasmuch as they've been unable to operate, uh, since, uh, March the tenth?
Correct. They were served March the, let's see. We was March the third, they were served, oh, sorry, March the seventh, they were served in March the tenth, if you remember.
Chief, how many, how many licenses, uh, how many businesses were cited?
Six.
How many?
Six, I believe.
And all of them, their licenses have been suspended. I mean, they're, yes, to sell.
My, my mayor, the, the duration of the suspensions are authorized to impose, except for, it's open-ended in the ordinance. And so it doesn't give a mandatory timeframe, ten days, twenty days, thirty days, ninety days. There is no mandatory timeframe in your ordinance. So the duration of the suspension is within your discretion. Furthermore, uh, a reinstatement fee, uh, not to exceed two hundred and fifty dollars may be imposed.
I agree with that. Now, I would just do say thirty dollars, thirty days for the first defense.
I'm looking at your ordinance right here and it says, um... The duration of such suspension and the amount of the licensing statement fee, uh, is in the sole discretion of the council.
If there was, if there was somewhere as this thirty days for the first suspension, thirty days for the first defense, sixty days for the second, ninety days for the third.
Thank you, living at an old book, been out there, he been here four months. Now he trying to tell our lawyer what he reading. And that's his job, to tell us illegal even.
I, I brought the ordinance we were in the last time, I didn't realize.
That don't mean it was right, that don't mean it wasn't old, that don't mean it wasn't out of date.
Well, if the ordinance is still in effect, we have to abide by it.
You see it, we can make the day, the day.
Look at section six eleven, number one.
Of our ordinance.
Again, we don't know that matter, council could do what we want if we want to vote on it. The term get over.
Let me just entertain the motion.
What's, what's that section say? I'm not even curious, because I was told I was wrong.
And there won't be no problem, we get money off of them. Why do you want to shut them down? They're bringing the city money. They're gonna like shut the interstate down.
And this is, this is what I'm understanding.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn.
From our attorney. We can take all of these suspensions on a case-by-case basis. We've had an appeal from these business owners. I, I'm assuming that we can therefore vote on whether or not to re- rescind the suspension or can end it down for the part of the time that's already passed. I, I just don't know that.
I, I do have a quick question. Am I understanding that correct, Mr. Denmark, though, what number one says under that section?
Um, I'm looking at section six dash eighty-six, suspension or revocation of license.
Okay. I was looking at the six one versus first defense within past few years, thirty-day suspension, a hundred-dollar reinstatement fee.
Can I take a little bit of that as well?
Yeah, that's, it just says violations and penalties, it's under...
Yeah, I, I don't know how you reconcile these. One section gives you the council discretion in terms of the duration and another one now it seems they oppose these mandatory minimums. And so, um, I think there's an interim inconsistency in the ordinances that I don't know how you resolve that here and now. But what I do know is that this gentleman, um, his client has served a suspension of some duration already and, and I would encourage you to give consideration to that amount of time. You, you may say that, uh, if we go with, uh, six dash eleven and it's thirty days, it would be, um, thirty days less than they've already served.
And that's what the council voted over last time, was to withhold the thirty days?
If I may.
So, are you telling me that I can let that council vote on, on what, what to do?
Uh, yeah, that, that's, yeah, maybe the council has to decide this, yes.
Um, Lord mercy.
If I may, uh, members of the board, as well as the mayor. Usually, and again, this is not to tell you how to do anything. Usually when there is a discrepancy in a law, um, there is a rule in place in which you allow the person to serve the lesser punishment. Uh, in this particular instance, we do have a conflict involved and we would ask that we grant him that leniency. Uh, again, he has suffered, uh, for those days, that was nine days, um, right at twenty-three. He's willing to pay the fine. Um, on top of that, he is willing to show whatever good faith he needs to show and he won't have to do it, including new software, including donating to youth, uh, Ashburn. So, again, we would ask that, um, the council have some leniency in this particular instance and allow him to reopen tomorrow and continue business operations.
Okay, um... This is just one. All right, it's my understanding from our city attorney that I can, um, ask for a motion to rescind the suspension of this license for a time that's already passed, uh, and, uh, return their license to them. Uh, may I have a motion to that, is that what I'm hearing? May I have a motion to that effect?
To the extent that, I mean, the floor is open to any member who wants to make any motion, um, to increase it, uh, to say it's sufficient, to, to reinstate them. The floor is open to any council member who wants to make any motion that, that seems to be...
I'll make a motion that we do time, serve, and issue the license.
I'm sorry, Mr.?
I said, I'll make a motion to do time, serve, and we issue the license.
Another second.
We have a motion.
And a second.
And a second to rescind the, the rest of their, uh, suspension, reinstate the license, uh, as of now. Have a motion and a second, uh, all in favor? All in favor? May I have a roll call vote, please, Monsieur?
John Burgess?
No, Rich, sir. Yes.
Corey Jordan?
Yes.
John Smith?
No.
Jonathan Barrett?
No.
Andrew Pierce?
No.
As I, to the vote, it was said three to two vote not to reinstate the license at this time.
I think we should, we can motion to impose, uh, uh, suspension of some duration because right now they don't have time.
Well, it was for thirty days.
I think we need a motion to that effect.
Okay.
We, we voted on thirty days the last time.
You did?
Yes, we, I believe we did.
Well, I mean, the, the purpose of the proceeding today was to allow them to hear.
Okay.
And, and so if you, you were not authorized to impose a penalty without further notice than to be heard. And so I, I believe that at, at this time, you should not have had it heard, uh, from the applicant. Now would be the appropriate time, uh, to make some motion and make some resolution.
But we did have a motion and the, and the vote was not to reinstate.
Right, and now you, so it was not, but the suspension is of indefinite duration as we sit here now. And you should impose a suspension of some duration.
Well, Mr. Lynn, when was the suspension, would, would it have ended?
On the tenth of April.
Tenth of April. That's like seven days from now.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we continue with the initial suspension and end it at the thirty days by going by what it says in section six eleven, that we, the first offense would be thirty-day suspension and a hundred and fifty-dollar reinstatement fee. So that would be April tenth. So I'll make a motion that we reinstate it on April tenth with that hundred and fifty-dollar reinstatement fee. I make that, I make that motion.
I see.
Have a motion, uh, to reinstate the license in ten days, is that it? On April the tenth, to reinstate the license at that time.
Just for clarification, that would be seven days.
Yeah.
Seven days, I'll make a seven day motion.
May I have a motion to that, oh, we, we have a motion, but in fact, may I have a second?
Where you go?
I have a second, all in favor? Ms. Pierce? Uh, Mr. Burgess and Mr. Corey voted no, that the, the vote is, carries three to two. The suspension will end when, in ten days.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
For the second round.
I have a couple of little minor resolutions we need to, um, deal with. The first one is, um... Recertification of, uh, our GMA certified city of ethics. We are a city of ethics at this time. We just will apply to, for recertification for, uh, may I have a motion to that effect? May I have a motion?
Uh, just before we continue, do we have a, uh, a pool right now, twelve individuals?
No.
That are owned, uh?
No.
Okay, is that something we need to do as we vote on this?
No.
Maybe we have, we don't have an ethics board, technically we're not part of this.
So, uh, do I understand then that we don't want to take part in Georgia City's week, April twentieth through twenty-first through the twenty-sixth? We have done it in the past. This really, uh...
Ms. Mayor, I, I thought we were talking about, uh, resolution.
Ethics.
The ethics resolution.
Probably had a resolution.
Recertification.
Right.
Well, on Georgia City's week?
No.
What resolution are you talking about?
City of, uh, city of ethics. Recertification.
Wait a minute. Well, I seem to have misplaced mine. Oh, here it is, I found it, I'm sorry, I am so sorry. Okay, I have a motion, I do have a motion.
You do not.
I do not have a motion. This is a resolution to, uh, from the Georgia Municipal Association who established this certified city of ethics program several years ago. And we have been in the, in the program for a long time. This is simply adopting a resolution to become recertified as a certified city of ethics under the GMA program. And what the basis of it is, is to serve others, not ourselves. Ourselves use resources with efficiency and economy, treat all people fairly, use the power of our position for the well-being of our constituents, and create an environment of honesty, openness, and integrity. Uh, if you all agree to adopt this resolution, I will need everyone's signature. May I have a motion? Do I have a motion?
Who was on the board here?
I'll make a motion that we accept it. I make the motion that we accept it. However, I would like to add the motion that we nominate, we follow what number two says and designate, uh, and designate a list and get a list of qualified, um, applicants that we ever need them. It's over on, there's not page number, but it's under section two forty-eight, number two. I make a motion that we, that we do accept it, but that we fulfill that number two under that section. I stand up.
Okay, where it says that the mayor and members of council shall each designate two qualified citizens to provide a pool of twelve individuals who consented to serve as a member of the Board of Ethics and who will be available for a period of two years to be called upon to serve in the event a Board of Ethics is appointed.
Yes, ma'am.
Should we find some people first before we do that? Should we find some people to, we own the vote?
But we have to, but we can, we can go ahead and adopt this resolution. If that is the wish of the council. I have a motion. May I have a second? I have a second. On the favor? Mr. Burgess?
No.
Mr. Jordan, vote. Ms. Pierce?
Sarah.
Yes, motion Pierce.
Should we give those individuals to the, I guess, D? Would that be? We'll have to figure out how to go about that.
Uh, the last item on the agenda is the recertification of the city of Ashburn taking part in Georgia Municipal Association's program, GMA Certified City of Ethics. With some recertification, we have been a city of ethics for several years now. Yes. We did that? I'm sorry.
City, we just did the city.
I thought that was the, um, the resolution to recognizing Georgia City's week.
That was next.
Okay. Okay, yeah. The neck, the, the, uh, next thing is to adopt this resolution of the city of Ashburn, oh, wait. Georgia Municipal Association, Association has established a certified city of ethics program and whereas the city of Ashburn wishes to be recertified as a certified city of ethics under the Georgia, under the GMA program.
We're on the executive session now.
I'm sorry.
Executive session, yes.
All right, that concludes our break room. Meeting finding a motion to go into executive session. For the missions, uh, personnel and administrative proceedings. Have a motion, may I have a second? Have a second, on the favor? The opposed? Motion Pierce, we will go into executive session.